Yeah.
All right. Good morning. Thank you for coming, coming out to our county. I call it our planning commission meeting, but anyhow, thank you for coming, being a part of it. It's probably going to take very long, but I'm going to get started and call our meeting to order. Ask Craig, would you pray for us?
Let's pray.
Father, so we pause at this moment in time to give you thanks and with good reason. Father, we celebrate this season of Thanksgiving and we think about all of the ways that you have blessed us so abundantly in this county. You provide for us. Father, you make, you make, help us to make good and wise decisions. You do that in accordance with your promises of scripture. Thank you for these men and their willingness to commit themselves, their time, their skills, their, their time away from families, Father, so that they might serve and serve well here in our community. Thank you for good government. Thank you for a safe place to live. Thank you for resources that can provide for all of the needs of our community and providing an abundance. Father, we just are grateful and thankful and we don't want to take it for granted. We turn our praise and our Thanksgiving back to you. I pray, Father, for those men and women who are protecting us today. Keep them safe and bring them home safely to their families in Christ's name.
Amen. All right. We have called meeting to order. Consideration approval, October thirty first minutes.
I'll make a motion approve.
Second.
All right, Brad makes motion to approve. Scott seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Ah, motion passes. All right, let's see here. Old business, we don't have any old business to talk about. Okay, let's go to new considerations. Who wants to take that? Go ahead, Brian.
Okay, we'll start it up right now. I have, um, Green Earth Materials LLC is seeking to rezone a por- uh, rezone a portion of parcel K fourteen dash four from C two to RE one. The property is adjacent to Fallen Oak Subdivision. They are proposing, uh, phase five of the, of the development on this property.
All right, I'm very aware this part of the property was, uh, zoned commercial with expectations of some other things. The way that property values in Rankin County are now, it may be better valued as residential. So they're asking to rezone it and I'm good. Let's, we'll, we'll address it when we get down to setting a public hearing.
Okay, the next item up is, uh, Mr. Albert McCray is seeking a conditional use permit to mine four acres on Pilgrim Rest Drive. Uh, the property is owned RE one. He is planning to mine the four acres for future development for his children. Uh, this is an aerial view of the property. Mr. McCray resides on and owns the adjacent properties to the ingress and egress. Uh, this is a view of the property, where the entrance will, uh, to the mine will be. And these are surrounding properties.
Okay, as you can see, that hill, the road is about four or five foot lower than the hill. That's his property. He wants to take some of that down for, for later use. Uh, but we'll, go ahead, I'm good. They're, they're both in my district, is why I'm the one that's addressing it right now. Go ahead.
Brian, just for clarity, he has submitted paperwork to you for an exempt mine operation.
Yes, sir, and I have received that paperwork back. He's good.
Yeah.
Let's see here. All right, Robert Foxworth is seeking a conditional use permit to relocate his tattoo studio from Builder Square to one thirty-four Baker Lane. This is a seven point four seven acre parcel that is zoned C two. C two zone allows tattoo parlors as a conditional use. Uh, this is an aerial view of the property. Mr. Foxworth was approved in May of twenty, twenty, twenty-two to operate an upscale tattoo studio and an art gallery on Builder Square. The studio doubles as an art gallery showcasing personal work by local and regional artists. And this is surrounding properties.
Okay, uh, this isn't a mile probably from where he located around the curve. He's outgrown where he's at. He's, we've had no complaints. I don't have a problem with it, so let's move on.
Site, site plan architectural review. Uh, we have, uh, defining wellness.
Mr. President, this is one where we need a motion to take this off the table from our prior planning commission at the end of October. So if we could have a motion, uh, to take this off the table for consideration, that would be good.
I make that motion.
Second.
I made a motion, Brad seconded motion, all in favor. Ah, all right, it's off the table.
Mr. President.
Now we're back in line.
Yep, Mr. President, this is one where it's site plan architectural review. Uh, it is simply before you for approval of the matters that are addressed via site plan architectural review. There's no zoning consideration.
All right, I make motion, we approve.
Second.
Brad seconded that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Ah, motion passes.
Okay, uh, the next item under site plan architectural review, Community Place, is proposing to construct a twenty-four by sixty storage building on the south side of the main building. Here's a view of what the structure will look like. Uh, this is the elevations. Uh, Tim Parker has reviewed the grading and drainage plan and has no comment.
Tim has no comment?
Well. Tim, you good?
Yeah, I will, that means it's okay.
Yeah, that's, that's wrong.
If I have comments, we go back and.
Yes, right. When he has no comment, that's a good thing.
That's a good thing.
All right.
That's a number two. All right.
Motion.
Motion.
Scott makes motion to approve.
Second.
Sid seconds that motion. All in favor? Ah, motion passes.
Mr. President, can we go back to item five, Roman numer five? Can we set those public hearings there?
Yes, sir, yes.
I think one and two can go together and then three separately.
All right, I'm.
I'm sorry, one can go separately, two and three can go together. My bad.
I make a motion to set, uh, the number one, December the second, nine o'clock.
I'll say, go ahead. Okay, uh, Brad makes a motion, Scott seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Ah, motion passes.
I'll make a motion to set two and three for December the sixteenth.
Second.
Brad makes motion, Scott seconds motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Ah, motion passes. Every, they are set. Right now, then.
Good morning, gentlemen. First item under nuisance, nuisance considerations.
A little hot up there. You good?
All right. I'm going, I'm going to lower my register here. Uh, first item under nuisance consideration is the Gary P. Mitchell nuisance property. Doesn't like me at eleven eighty-six Popper Springs Road, Florence. This is a District One property. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask for Mr. Mitchell or anyone on behalf of Mr. Mitchell who's here, uh, to come forward, uh, to be prepared to address the board. Brian's going to demonstrate with the photos.
We received a complaint on September the ninth for inoperable vehicles, uh, and also rubbish and debris. These are the pictures that were taken on the ninth. A certified letter was received. Colby spoke to Ms. Hodges and she requested extra time for a family member to help, uh, Mr. Mitchell get the property cleaned up. Uh, this is a repeat offender from two thousand seventeen. And this is showing a picture taken yesterday showing improvement to the property.
It looks like they've been improved, made some effort to, uh, you know, improve on it. Are they, they still working on it? Is anybody here?
Anyone here on behalf of Mr. Mitchell? Don't see anyone here, so Sid, typically we would take, uh, a couple of different options of pathway. What, one, we can continue it for a period of at least thirty days, allow the staff to continue working with Ms. Hodges. I'm assuming Ms. Hodges has some connection to Mr. Mitchell and so, uh, daughter or whatever. Uh, and so we can do it that way. Another way to handle it, Sid, so that we don't have to come back, is just go ahead and declare the nuisance, but allow the staff to work with the family. And as long as continued improvement occurs, there'll be no need for, for the matter to go to Justice Court. So either, either option is, is available.
Yeah, I say we declare the nuisance and give them, you know, give them time and, and work with them and give them time to, you know, get the rest of it cleaned up.
Mr. President, I think that would be, uh, Mr. Scarborough's motion to go ahead and declare the nuisance.
How much time you want?
How much time you want to give to Sid?
I say thirty days.
Thirty days.
All right, I've got a motion by Sid to declare, oh, thirty days, we'll check back. Brad seconded that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Ah, motion passes.
We'll close that public hearing. Uh, item two is a public hearing on the Don Ed Woods nuisance property, two oh two Joe Davis Drive. Uh, this is in District Three. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Mr. Woods or anyone on behalf of Mr. Woods who's here to come forward to be prepared to address the board. Brian will demonstrate with photos.
We received a complaint on September seventeenth for rubbish and debris and weeds. These were the pictures taken on the seventeenth. A certified letter was mailed and received by the homeowner. No contact has been made with the homeowner. And these are the pictures that were taken yesterday. There have been no changes to the property.
Supposed to paralysis weekend, so not kill weekends.
It's, it's Mr. Woods, President, or anyone on behalf of Mr. Woods. Gentlemen, I don't see anyone here. Uh, Brad.
I make a motion to declare it nuisance and send it to Justice Court.
All right, got a motion to declare nuisance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jay makes, uh, a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Ah, motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Our next meeting will be held on January second, two thousand twenty-five, unless otherwise notified. That's kind of up for grabs right now. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn out of the planning commission?
Mr. President. Mr. President, we did have a question about if the board wants to have a planning commission meeting on January second. The day after New Year's, before we go over those items to the next board meeting on January the sixth instead.
How's the staff feel about this?
We have nothing scheduled at this time for January second.
All right, how does this affect the rest of county government?
It doesn't.
It doesn't at all?
As long as we haven't notified anybody to be present for a hearing on the second, we're in good shape. I don't know that that's happening.
All right, guys, y'all want to?
I'm good with the sixth.
Put it to the sixth.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
All right, do I have a motion to change the January second, planning commission meeting to January sixth?
So moved.
Second.
Scott makes motion, Jay seconds a motion. All in favor? Ah, motion passes, it'll be the sixth. All right, now do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Jay makes motion to adjourn from planning commission.
Second.
Scott seconded that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Ah. Right now, then, let's. Call the board supervisors meeting to order. Uh, this will be their November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four meeting. Uh, we, under public comment, our first guy right out of the chute, Mr. Dave Van.
This is going to be super short.
You want to add my team chat?
Thank you, Mr. President.
I ran through lots of it.
And fellow board supervisors, thank you for letting me come before you today. Uh, my name's Dave Van with Regent Eight. And first thing I want to say is, uh, uh, have Thanksgiving and Merry Christmas. And there's a lot of folks in Rankin County that's going to have a Christmas with their families this year and Thanksgiving because of the support that you've given to Regent Eight, especially and specifically the newest and the most modern psychiatric psychiatric facility that we have, uh, here in Rankin County. So thank you so much for your support. It means an awful lot to everybody in this county.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Senate Bill twenty-one hundred requires me to come before you at least once a year, face to face, but anytime you call on me, I'll be here. Uh, but at least once a year and, uh, and give you our annual report, answer any questions that you might have about Regent Eight. If you don't mind, I'd like to approach and give you this annual report. Is it okay, Mr. President?
Yes, sir, come on. Yes, sir.
Good morning.
So real fast, this is some reading material, but, uh, I'm going to summarize what we've kind of done over the last year. This is my twenty-eight consecutive year to come before you. And, uh, I think twenty-seven of those twenty-eight years, we've not asked for, uh, uh, an increase in any allocations and we're not this year. So, but we do thank you for your support and, uh, you have given us more than, uh, what we could ever imagine in this county and especially your support of the facilities over here. It goes directly toward your constituents. Uh, in the last fiscal year, we served fourteen thousand twenty-nine individuals. Our, uh, we have five hundred and thirty-five staff today. We're still opening three hundred to three hundred and fifty new cases every single month. So we could, we could put a board of about six new staff members with, uh, mental health degrees every month, just to keep up with the growth. And I have to mention that we have to compete with other folks for quality staff members and our institutions are really not putting out that many folks. So, uh, if we don't lose anybody, we could add about six new employees with, uh, clinical degrees every month. Uh, our budget, Regent Eight, in the last, our expenditures in the last fiscal year is thirty-three million twenty-two thousand dollars. And, uh, again, I'd like to say thank you for your support, but we couldn't do our jobs either, not only without your support, but all the folks in Rankin County, Mark and Jessica, the Chief of Clerk's office, and Sheriff, Craig, and Keith, and Ms. Martin, every single person in this county works with us, uh, in, in a very good, uh, productive way. And we're very thankful to be able to live, work, and play here in Rankin County and raise our families. And I, I have to go to other counties and I don't tell them that.
Well, you just, you just did.
Well, forgive me, please. Yeah.
All right.
You guys have any questions at all?
Things seem to be running pretty smooth.
For the most part.
Yes.
The new facility?
Yeah.
It is, it's, it, yes, uh, very well. It is the model for the state. We've had, uh, Senate Public Health and Welfare Chairman in the House, Public Health and Welfare Chairman, just recently come out and spent about two hours there. And they're wanting to plan to that facility so they can duplicate that facility, uh, throughout the state. So by far, uh, is it, uh, the best in the state of Mississippi. And of course, when we designed that building, we didn't design it like an institution. Uh, we designed it as if our family members, our mothers, our kids may have to take advantage of that service. And, uh, and we wanted them to be comfortable. We separated units, not just men and women, but age appropriateness. And, you know, you don't necessarily want to put a, uh, someone that's actively psychotic in the same room with somebody who's suicidal.
Yeah.
Of course, that'd make the suicide person go ahead and, and do what they need to do. So, so a lot of times people don't think about that in the mental health world. It's, it's just, uh, it's just not a cookie cutter kind of field. It's a case by case basis and, and so we designed that different than I think anywhere else in the country. Uh, and so I would send my family members, my children to that facility if they needed, uh, that service.
You do have a room reserved for me, don't you?
I do, and we do have direct TV. It's on the wifi, it's not real good, but it seems it was, but.
Yeah.
But, uh, you get to watch it every now and then.
Okay.
Good food, we have cooked there.
Yeah.
We, um, story, just yesterday, we had a lady that was, uh, when the facility first opened, she spent ten days there. And, uh, uh, and so she has, um, gotten off her medication and is now, uh, a family member took her to Brentwood. They called from Brentwood, called me yesterday from Brentwood saying that she was raised in Kane. She didn't like Brentwood, she wanted to come back to the state facility over there. She said she was there one time, she said it's such a nice place, the people are nice and, and the food's much better. And, uh, and I apologize to the folks of Brentwood, but I told her that, uh, that she needs to sit there and comply with their training plan over in Brentwood. Anyway, so it is a great facility and, and the biggest problem we've had is getting folks to leave sometimes. And if we tell them it's not a shelter and it's not somewhere you live forever, but we got some good folks too, uh.
You do, man, you do us a great job too. Thank you.
Appreciate your hard work, man.
Appreciate y'all. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, sir.
Well, could I real fast introduce Mr. Jim Fisher?
Yes.
And, uh, Ms. Ann Fisher back here.
Yes.
Uh, he's our personnel director and our acting director of operations and, uh, and they do all the work and I thank you for your time.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Have a nice Christmas.
All right, buddy.
See you, cousin.
All right. Mr. Slade.
Yes, sir. Gentlemen, the first item under, you got a cheat sheet over there for me, Brian, by chance, on, uh, Pierce Construction. I don't remember, uh, all the details on that one. Do you have that by chance?
Uh, let's see, I know they've been.
This for the large? Yeah, this is, this is for the expansion. It was a four acre exempt mine operation. Y'all remember, guys, we had, I'll wing it. Uh, we had Pierce Construction before, uh, Star Road District One. This was, uh, a exempt four acre mine operation. What, uh, what was unclear, uh, at the time that it was before you, uh, was that an application had been submitted by Pierce Construction for an expansion of that, uh, mining operation beyond the four acre exempt mine operation to include twenty-one additional acres, a total of twenty-five acres. And, uh, MDEQ had not yet acted on the expanded. They had issued the exempt mine operation clearance, but they had not issued the twenty-one acre additional clearance through MDEQ. That has now been done, according to what I understand. That process, have we got the paperwork from?
We've received no paperwork.
All right, so DEQ, I think, is waiting to issue the twenty-one acre expansion, uh, on the basis of this board's conditional use permit. And I think that will clear things, from what I understand. That's probably the only thing that's left to be, uh, added to DEQ's file in order for them to grant the permit for them to go ahead and, and mine additionally. So what we should do today is reopen that public hearing and I'll ask if there's anyone here, uh, to speak in opposition to the Pierce Construction conditional use permits, uh, Star Road. Is anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. Uh, there may be, uh, others here, uh, there may be questions that the board has. Assuming that there are no additional questions, what I would ask is that we grant the conditional use application using the exact same conditions that we used for the four acre exempt mine operation. The same exempt, uh, conditions will apply, just be inclusive of all twenty-five acres now. And we will make it conditional on a permit being issued by DEQ for the expansion of that operation to include all twenty-five acres. So I would need a motion to that effect. This, I believe, is a District One property.
I make a motion?
Second.
All right, Sid makes a motion, Brad seconded the motion. Any other discussion?
I rode by there the other day and it looked like all of the trash is coming in right there, right there, pretty close to this state property anyway. Yeah, it's coming, it's right there, close to the state property. Move the driveway and, yeah, move it up. We're all land owner, property owner, people live up the road, we'll be probably pleased about that, so.
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor? Ah, motion passes.
Very good. Gentlemen, if I may, let's, I'm going to close that public hearing on the record. Um, if I may, just as a quick reminder, I'm going to need, uh, to visit with you guys in executive session to give you an update on some litigation matters that are pending, uh, and there may be some other things that we need to discuss as well that are going to be.
Our C R land acquisition people just came in.
They sneaked in on me.
Yeah.
Uh, so we may have, we may have some other matters that we need to address in executive session that have to do with property acquisition, uh, and stuff like that. So I'm going to need, I'm going to need to have an executive session with you, thank you.
All right, Mr. Hicks.
Uh, very quickly, the county has received its Senate bill money for this year, two forty-four sixty-eight, and we're just asking for authorization to move those funds to be designated bank account required by the MOU.
I make a motion to approve.
Brad makes motion to approve.
Second.
Scott seconded that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Ah, motion passes.
Do you have your agendas before you for Monday if there's any questions on Rusty's?
Thank you, sir. Uh, additional business? Anybody have any additional business?
Jay.
Jay?
Yes, yes, uh, yeah, Palaverty.
And, uh, Flowood.
Oh, yeah, and the MOU for Fannie Mae Parkway? We need to get that executed. What do we need to do to?
I thought we already did it. Yeah, we, we talked about it, Jay, but we didn't actually have the MOU before us until recently. Okay. Uh, Rusty sent me a copy of it within the past week, week and a half. So I've, I've looked, I've begun looking at it. Uh, Jay, what I would ask is that we have one motion to add both of those items, Palaverty and the MOU with Flowood on Fannie Cook Parkway. It is right, Fannie Cook Parkway, right? That's true. So I would add both of those in one motion and then we can take them and, uh, I'll walk you guys through authority on each of those. All right. I make a motion to add these two items.
Second.
All right, Jay makes a motion to add Palaverty and MOU Flowood, Fannie Mae, Fannie Cook Parkway, under additional business to be discussed. And Scott seconded that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor of adding this? Ah, motion passes, we have added it.
We'll start with the Fannie Cook. Fannie Cook. So Fannie Cook Parkway is a road project instituted, uh, by and on behalf of the city of Flowood. There is a portion of the new planned roadway that will lie in unincorporated Rankin County. There's a portion of it, uh, for purposes of, uh, uniformity, uh, of everybody being on the same page, of there being no question in the mind of either the federal government that may be assisting in the construction and providing some of the funding, or the state of Mississippi and providing some of the funding, uh, through its, uh, pathways to do that. Uh, so that there's not, uh, any concern over whether or not the county is a participant or is a supporter of that project. This board has been asked to execute an MOU that will state that not only is there support, but there is a willingness to participate in the project. Okay? The distinction here is that I have not had an opportunity to fully understand and appreciate what the county's responsibility would be under the MOU. So I want to, I, I want time to do that. My request would be that if you are of a mind that we do want to participate, then give me an opportunity to further evaluate the level of participation and report back to you. You can prove the MOU conditioned upon my review and your later understanding of what your level of participation is. And then it can be stood up for execution without us having to address it again at a board meeting. If y'all are good with that.
How long is this going to take?
Not long. All right. In fact, I expect, uh, I expect if you want to, we could actually act on it again. You can just hold off acting today when you act on it on Monday when we come back on Sunday. Let's just do that. Okay? Y'all good with that?
We're good with it.
We're going to table it?
Yeah, I was, yeah, no, sir, you don't even, you don't even have to do anything. It's just before you.
Okay, that's right, traditional.
We'll have the record, uh, reflect that you took no action today, that the matter is saying, if you can help me, let's get it on, under my section on, uh, twelve two. I was trying to delicately suggest that your board lawyer has.
Not ready?
Has been dilatory, uh, in his requirement to review the thing. So, uh, anyway, now that that's out there on the records, that's good.
Right.
Not the first, not, not the first nor the last time.
Let me say, for our board attorney, I have kept him quite busy in this for two, so I thank you for what you said.
Speaking of which, uh, we can now move to Palaverty discussion.
Boy, you made it back in one piece.
Yes, sir, one piece, that of ours. Absolutely, I'm grateful to be standing and walking and all of that this time, uh, this time. Uh, so, uh, Palaverty, uh, this, this is a longstanding issue that has, that was visited upon us, uh, back, uh, the prior administration, back, back when, uh, we had a different supervisor in District Two. Uh, we had issues, uh, you know, some pretty serious and significant issues. with, uh, with substandard roads that had been developed by the developer of Palaverty subdivision, uh, substandard, uh, and those roads came apart during construction activity. And so, we had to act quickly in emergency fashion to address the condition of the roads out there. There were a portion of those roads that were still the obligation of the subdivision developer to maintain, but because of the emergency, it authorized, the board declaring the emergency, it authorized us to move forward and at least provide access to the roads, uh, even those that were on prob, continued to be on private property subject to private maintenance, uh, during the, during the interim. Uh, since then, we've, uh, had to sue the developer, uh, to address those continuing obligations, uh, and that has been, as you guys know, that has been a rigmarole. It has been a long, drawn-out process of litigation, very expensive and costly litigation. Uh, in my opinion, totally unnecessary, but there you have it. Uh, we were forced to do that, and protect the residents out there. We had to take action, uh, and get as forceful as possible, uh, to make the developer understand his obligations to continue, uh, to do what he's required to do under, under your development ordinances. Uh, he wants to continue developing the property, and in exchange, we ha, as a way of resolving that litigation, we've entered into an agreement. That agreement has been signed, has been entered with the court in the litigation, and the developer is now obligated to carry out the terms and the conditions of that settlement agreement. So far, he has done some of that, but not all that is required. We are still waiting to receive a plat of the new lots that he intends to develop so that the county can move forward with the approved plat and complete the construction of the streets that the developer will actually pay for. So, county taxpayer funds will be reimbursed by the developer through the sale of the lots once the plat's approved. The very first step in this process has to be an approved plat, and so, we are waiting for the developer and his engineer to provide us with an approv, a plat that we can approve and recommend to you guys that complies with the settlement. That has not yet happened. We've had multiple meetings with the developer, his legal counsel, and the engineer, walking them through the steps of what an approvable plat would look like. And they have slowly, over time, brought that plat through revisions up to a point where we're close, but we're still waiting on the final version, with the appropriate language, compliant with settlement agreement. Uh, uh, unless we are prepared to go back to the court and ask the judge to force him to move more quickly, we are simply in a holding pattern, waiting, okay? In the meantime, you've got streets out there that continue to, to be substandard, and over time, we know the effect of that, weather and other drainage issues, and other things that can contribute to, you know, deterioration of the streets, and, you know, we don't, none of us wants those residents out there to be held hostage by one intransigent, uh, difficult personality. Tim, do I leave anything out? All right, so, uh, so what I would suggest, gentlemen, is this, that, uh, Jay and I had a quick conversation about it, uh, and, and Scott, I think you and I probably do need to have a conversation about it as well. We, our thought process at the moment is, uh, to the extent that we have public roads for sure in that area that need attention, we need to address the condition of those roads, and to the extent that there is an opportunity to address, at least to some degree, the state and condition of the private roads that are in this portion of the development that we're waiting on the plat, to the extent that this board believes we need to address those, we can do that by way of the standing litigation that we have and authorize that to happen in order to achieve some form of continuing settlement of that litigation, all right? So, there's an opportunity, should you choose to do that, to address it. My thought would be, if we can get away with addressing the public roads that we've already inherited, let's do that. To the extent we need to go farther onto the private roads, my thought would be, let's evaluate what that is, and let's make sure that we don't step on the settlement agreement trying to achieve something for the property owners out there.
So, the three roads that we need to get paved are Del Rio and Durango Drive.
Yep.
And a piece of Plantation Boulevard.
Those are all private, those are all subject to the plat, every single one of those.
So, all of them's private roads?
Well, just because we haven't got them updated yet.
Yep.
But we're going to get our money. Man, we got million dollar houses sitting over here that they're having to drive.
How long we going to wait on them?
Years, years.
Yep.
Long time, so.
Uh, eleven months for me, yeah.
Part of the reason that we have.
We're going to get it, we're going to get it.
Well, if he wants to sell any more of that land, he's got, we ought.
Yeah, he can't sell any, he can't sell any lots until we approve the plat. Uh, typically, he couldn't sell any lots until the roads were completed, which would be his responsibility under normal circumstances. So this would kind of give us an opportunity to move ahead. So here's the thing, what, we have a history here, don't we?
Right.
With, with this particular development, and our history has not been good.
So we already had to go and upgrade the roads, and we had to get money from him for that, right?
Well, no, the money actually came from the folks that, that tore the road up. We got it from a home builder. And we got it from a real estate agent, and we got it from the actual dirt hauler.
Right.
Those three altogether combined to pay us a sum of money and to, to cover the costs.
He got out of not paying anything.
He didn't pay a dime.
Yeah.
He never paid a dime, which is why we had to do the, the lawsuit. Uh, he's, he's now in a position where he has to reimburse the county. But, uh, this is a, this is a process, and in the past, we have been very careful to require him to act.
Yeah.
I, I'm still waiting on good faith out of that development. It's apparently, apparently, it's not.
Scott had a good idea, rather than us putting the final, doing it all, why don't we can just go out there and put the base on, and at least give these people something they can, you know, not have to wash their cars every day.
Absolutely. Uh, in fact, that's part of the settlement agreement. Once you guys approve, here's how the settlement's supposed to work. Once you guys approve the plat, receive an approvable plat, and act and approve it, then Mike's folks would, it, that would trigger the road department to get out there and actually install the base on the very roads that you just identified, Jay, install the base. Part of these roads will end up being, out of necessity, a portion of the construction drives to build the houses that will go on these lots that you approved. The construction traffic is what has concerned us all along. It's why we forced, as a part of the settlement, Mr. Edwards has to construct a construction entrance. That construction entrance is going to put construction traffic on Del Rio. Isn't that right, Del Rio?
Or it is.
Or? Possibly Durango, although most of the lots, uh, going to be new construction, are going to be on Plantation and Del Rio. There may be one or two houses that are on Durango, but those three streets that Jay just mentioned, those three streets are going to get construction traffic. Now, it's, it's, it's limited, there's twenty-five lots that are coming online.
Additional?
Twenty-five new lots.
But they're going to have a construction entrance, though, right?
From, from Church Road.
Yeah.
But they're going to be thrown out, Jay, keep in mind.
Right.
They, they can't just go straight to the lot. They will have to impact Del Rio, Durango, and Palaverty, and plant, and extension, uh, I'm sorry, Plantation Boulevard, extension of Plantation. The construction traffic is going to impact all of those roads. We need that base in place.
Yeah.
Right?
But I don't see how, these are built out already. There's only three lots left that's not built.
You hadn't seen the new, you hadn't seen the new lot.
I'm talking about what we have already.
Yeah, what you have, I think there may be three lots that don't have construction on them, on them current, that's correct.
So that should be the only traffic that should be coming through there.
Yes, sir, but keep in mind, there ain't no construction entrance yet.
Right, I get it, I get it.
Now, and there's no timeline that you know of on when the plat will be ready for approval?
That's correct. We believe that the changes, the most recent changes that we requested, those should have already been placed onto another plat and submitted long ago, weeks ago. What, what is holding that up, I don't know.
That's what you and I and Tim met about several weeks ago.
Yep.
Several.
Several weeks ago, that's correct.
Is there any reason why Tim should not have already done that to us?
Unless he's being told, don't submit anything, or keep holding it up, or whatever, which could be the case.
Probably waiting on what to do.
I'm wondering if he's waiting to be paid. I'm wondering if he's waiting to be paid.
From who?
The developer.
Well.
Go ahead.
On this, are we looking at taking some action, or just waiting for them to submit?
No, sir, there wasn't any action for us to take. I, I intended for you guys to act on a plat.
But we don't have the plat, so it's pretty clear to me that we don't take action, and we leave it up to you lawyers as to whether we need to go.
Well, I disagree, man, we've been waiting on this forever.
But, what do you?
I mean, we going to get our money eventually.
You talking about go ahead and put the base on?
Yeah.
Yeah, keep in mind, gentlemen, that you've got.
Do we have to?
For years.
What do we have to do? I know, what do we have to do?
I don't know, I, whatever we got to do, we need to make it happen.
On these three roads, these three streets, now.
They private roads right there.
That's right, um, and we do have somewhat of a lien.
Oh, we have a, not just somewhat, we have a lien on a hundred and fifty acres.
Yeah, um.
You've leaned up the entire rest of his property. Everything he owns out there is, has a lien on it.
And we've got homes that are built, and people that are traveling through mud to get to those homes.
Yes, sir.
And we've got a lien on more than enough property.
Yes, sir.
To cover the base on these three.
And a development, Steve, that's approaching twenty years old?
Yeah. All right, it's you two, I'm for, I am for helping people and putting the base down, and just, I mean.
Let me ask you this.
Eventually, we will get our money out.
I mean.
This is.
Obviously, the base is failing out there, so it's going to have to be dug out once out there, and sixteen dollars, isn't it correct?
I don't know what all Mike's going to do to get it.
We, we looked at it, because as a part of the settlement agreement, we needed to understand what is the county's cost to get these roads up to our standard going to be? So Tim's already done all that, calculating, I'm putting him on the spot here.
Can we have that number?
So, some of it is, some of it's undercut, some of it's line treatment, uh, there's various, uh, applications to get where the existing, what I'm calling their existing roads, where the houses, where their houses now, uh, to get those ready for base.
So what's the price, the cost?
Uh, I don't remember the, the total.
Total was, uh, point six.
Eight hundred, something like that?
Yes, point six to seven hundred.
Uh, for the total, but that, that includes the new plat, there's new lot, so the roads will have to be extended.
Extended.
Well, there is no road at all now, so you have what Mr. Bishop's talking about now, I think, are where their existing houses, so there's an existing road there. So you got, there's two different types of roads, if you will, the ones that are paired up now, and then there's some that, that don't exist. The extensions of those roads don't exist at all now.
I, I would think we spend our money on those where the houses exist, and stop. We're not giving him any incentive to move further if we go on and put more money, invest money where there are no homes.
The incentive, as I appreciate it, is that he intends to sell a different road.
That's right.
He cannot do that unless and until we see a plat.
Yeah.
He's got nothing to sell, unless he sells the whole property in bulk.
Yeah.
Which, by the way, I'm not opposed to.
Yeah.
I'd love to work with a developer who actually wants to do it like we require. All right, he need to sell property, or he can get us a plat. So, to, to refine, I guess, where we are in the discussion, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Uh, it seems to me that we need to, uh, we need to authorize some judgment on the part of our road manager, on the part of our consulting engineer, uh, to evaluate what work needs to be done at the moment to address the condition of the accesses to the existing houses. What work needs to be done, and let's get a report back to you guys Monday, if possible. I realize we're in the holidays, and I apologize to those guys. I don't, I hope I didn't add a whole lot of work, but just a, a quick, high-view evaluation that you guys might be in a position to act on Monday.
Yeah.
If, if you're in a position to do that.
Can you do it, Tim?
Yes, sir, with the.
You probably aren't. You probably aren't going to Oxford, are you?
No, sir, I will be available Friday afternoon.
Okay.
Starting at two thirty.
Something you do at two thirty? Absolutely.
Hey, Tim, I have an extra ticket in the seat, if you need.
Do, uh, do we need to take any action, or we wait to hear from them?
Yeah, uh, uh, unless, unless there's a sense that we need to act today, I, I, I don't want.
I think I'm just going.
Mike come up with a dollar. Yeah.
Working private roads, right?
So. All right, this is a weird one, Sid. You're exactly right, thanks for bringing that up. They're going to continue to be private. The issue is that the settlement agreement that the court has ordered, we follow, requires the county to do something it doesn't normally do, which is to construct roads and then get them up to our own standards, but be reimbursed by the developer. This is, this is a court-ordered resolution of litigation. This is not what we would normally do. This is a special deal, just for Joe Edwards, uh, and it's a way that for him to get out of hock, and for us to get out of litigation, uh, and it's, it, it's a great way to resolve the case, and I'm glad we have this opportunity. I just wish I could get him to follow through with his part of the deal. He's already said it, this is the deal he wants to do. So, it's frustrating, I wish we could get a plat in front of you guys and move forward. But once we get that plat approved, we can get out there and actually construct all of the roads in accordance with the plat. That's the plan for everybody to know where the lot's going to be, where the road's going to be. Right now, we don't have that. Does that make sense?
It does.
So if we get out there and start building something, and the plat comes back, and it's finally going to end up being different from what's been done, then we got ahead of ourselves, and we spent money we shouldn't have spent. I wanted to avoid that at all possible. So maybe something that's a hybrid, a little bit of an interim, where we ask these guys, get out there and tell us, what do we need to do to make sure the people who are living out there right now can get access to a passable road? So let's get a, let's get a hybrid, let's get an in-between place, and then we'll, eventually, we'll get it all handled and get reimbursed for the vast majority. All right, can we do that?
Yes, sir.
So we'll act on that on Monday. Sam, if you will put, uh, a little note, uh, uh, discussion and potential action about Palaverty, the E R D E.
Is that it?
That's it. Um, we do have, uh, a need for executive session. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
All right.
Second.
Scott makes a motion, Jay seconds a motion, that's the need to go into executive. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes for the need. Now then, do I have a motion to go into executive session for litigation and property acquisition? Scott makes motion, Jay seconds a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
A motion passes.